...loves to read, so you have five books in their kit where another kid loves the little battery video game, you know. Or like I said, if you're, you have three kids and they all love Monopoly. I know when I was growing up, my dad and I played Monopoly every night after I did my homework. So it's what works for you and your family. Anything else? We'll be around for a few minutes afterwards if you have any other questions. Like Jim said, if you think of something, you know, whether it's tomorrow, a week, a month down the road, please give the Public Safety Office a call. Our phone number is on some of the materials. Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it. And please go home and get yourself prepared.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. One second.
Yes. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I recognize you. I've seen you before.
I'm Wendy Williams with the Lancaster Outlook. Business and Neighborhood Watch. These are two proven methods of fighting crime in a community. Shelley Enzen is with the Public Safety Office, a group that helps to train and support. Hello, Shelley. You are actually very instrumental in taking the Public Safety Office and making it what it is today. What is the purpose? What's the mission?
Well, I believe there's many aspects to our mission. First and foremost, we're here for the city residents, to support them. We get daily, weekly complaints, whether it's related to calls they made to the sheriff's station or animal care and control, customer service issues. A lot of our Neighborhood Watch and Business Watch program members can call with questions related to public safety. Obviously, too, our Neighborhood Watch and Business Watch are our top priorities, but we cover many aspects of public safety.
Now, why join? What's the purpose?
Well, Neighborhood Watch has been proven over the years. It actually was founded in 1972, and it's one of the most effective ways to keep crime out of your neighborhood. So that's first and foremost, the number one reason. And it also brings about neighborhood camaraderie. These days, most people don't know who their neighbors are, and we tell them they don't have to be best friends if they become friends.
Good evening. It's now 6:00 P.M. and the special session of Lancaster Planning Commission is now in session. Mr. Burkey will offer the invocation. Ms. Smith will lead us in the pledge. If you'd please stand.
That's praying. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this evening. We thank you for the time to get together and look at the future of our city. Lord, we just pray, Father, your hand would continue to be upon it. We thank you for the things that have happened in the recent past as far as the lessening of crime and things of that nature. We pray you'd give us wisdom now as we make decisions about our city. Help all of us to get involved, public and planning commissioners and the staff, and all work together to make a better city. And, Lord, we just pray your blessings upon this, and we'll be sure to give you the praise for it. These things I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have the roll card, please?
Commissioners, Larry Burkey.
Yeah.
Dana Haycock.
Here.
Damon Jacobs.
Here.
Marsha Mundy.
Here.
Vice Chair Sammy Smith.
Here.
Chairman James Vos.
Here.
Commissioner Jonathan Irvin absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Irvin emailed us and indicated that he's under the weather tonight, so we wish him well and a speedy recovery. At this time, we have public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of 10 minutes is provided at this time during which input may be given regarding any agenda item. Any person who would like to address the Planning Commission is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary. Speaker's cards are available at the rear of the chamber. Individual speakers would be limited to two minutes at this time. Do we have any speaker cards for the initial 10-minute?
I don't believe so unless Warren Troutman is requesting to speak early before the...
Who is that? I'm sorry? Mr. Troutman?
Yes.
Want to speak early? No? Okay. Then we'll move on. The purpose of tonight's meeting is further discussion of general plan topics in preparation for commencement of public hearings on the General Plan Update Program. We're going to be provided with an updated materials, which were distributed at the February 20th, or 2nd meeting, and we received a number of additional letters and correspondence and matrix tonight. So, at this time, then, do we have a staff report? Or, yes. Go ahead.
Yes, very briefly, what we have provided tonight, in addition to the materials, as you mentioned, that were presented February 2nd, at the February 2nd special meeting, we have provided tonight an update of the staff response to commission comments, which is under tab number four. So we've provided additional staff responses to you in that update. And also, we've received, I believe, five additional request letters regarding general plan, land use, various land use requests. And we've provided an updated summary log to you under tab number five, as well as all of the correspondence that we have received and supporting information relating to those particular requests.
Very good. Anything further, Mr. Ludicki? I see we have a person I don't recognize sitting to your left. Would you introduce him to the commission, please?
Yes, this is Jason Cottle. He is actually the city's deputy city manager.
Ah-ha.
And, oh, you may have been absent at the last...
I was.
...meeting. Yes, when he was introduced.
I had other interests at the last meeting.
Is he here?
Welcome.
He's been here before.
All right. The protocol this evening, just so we can keep on some sort of a track, we have eight tabs in our binder. So what I'd like to do, if everyone agrees, is to go through each tab. If anyone has any comments, or questions, or corrections, or concerns, please voice them, and we'll share them with the, with the members of the public after the public testimony, all right? So we'll have public testimony first, and then we'll go through each tab. All right? Okay. So, public testimony on the general plan revision. This portion of the agenda allows for an individual an opportunity to comment on the general plan revision only. Any person who would like to address the commission on the general plan revision is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary. Individual speakers would be limited to three minutes each at this point. So, Mr. Ludicki, do we have any speakers? Mr. Troutman?
Yes, Warren Troutman.
All right. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Members of the board, and Dave Ledbetter, and guests. I own a little property on West Avenue J and 50th, and I would like to take that property, the first 20 acres along the faces of prison, I would like to take that and turn it into a commercial land, because there's no convenience stores, no drugstores, or anything out there. Now, I took a trip out there, and going west, there's nothing out there. I drove out three miles, and there was absolutely nothing. So nobody, if they had any umbrellas or anything, they'd have to come clear in here. I went down 50th down to Corse Hill, and there was nothing. It's all, you know, there's a lot of homes, but no convenience, or stores of any kind. So then, I come east on 50th, and of course, I had to drive, what, almost three miles before I hit this convenience center down here. So I would like for the board to see that I could turn that, just the 20 acres. I put a wall behind there, and then the other 20 acres would be for single-family, semi, single-family residents. Where do I have? So I'd like for you to consider that and see what you can do.
So for your information, Mr. Troutman, under B-17 of our tab, there's a recommendation by staff to support commercial portion of the request, but increase the size of the commercial to 20 acres, and the remainder to be MR-1. Okay?
Did he, did you hear that, nothing?
Did you hear me?
Well, some of it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
If you wouldn't mind stepping back to the podium, thank you. Can you hear me, Mr. Troutman?
Yes.
Okay. We understand your request, and staff has recommended to us under tab B-17 to support the commercial request, to increase its size to 20 acres along Avenue J, and the remainder of the lot to be considered MR-1, which is a heavier density residential. All right?
Well, I'd like to have the lots 10,000 feet, so you don't hear the neighbors arguing and flushing their toilets.
We'll consider your request, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other speaker's cards, Mr. Ludicki?
I can fill it out afterwards.
Must be Mr. May. Welcome.
Good evening. Tim May, May Centers. This afternoon, I, hopefully you've got a copy of the letter from Jim Wood and myself concerning...
Yes, I received it.
Yes, thank. Then I'll make it brief. Even though the newspaper likes, every time they write about myself, they say I'm a Mission VAO developer. In reality, I'm a Lancaster developer. This is where my office is, in our shopping center's up here. And we developed three centers, which, the one at 40th Street, Weston Avenue L, was a general plan amendment. And what we're asking here across the street is the right, we support their right to submit for zone change, but to use this process is not adequate. It's not vetting the property correctly. It's not letting the homeowners know what's going on. He submitted a letter, with my understanding, with about seven properties on it. This is not the way to do it. Transparency seems to be a key word in our society right now when you turn on the cable news network. And that's what this is. Let him go through the normal process, just like we did, with a general plan amendment, and the homeowners and the residents in the area know what's going on. Thank you. If you have any other questions?
I don't have any questions. I will make a statement. The process we're faced with is a general plan revision for the entire city. It's been properly noticed. We've had a number of public workshops, and we will have a number of hearings, so it will be adequate notice. But I appreciate your comments, sir. Thank you.
My comment back, can I, may I respond?
Any further speakers?
I have no other cards at this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then. Then we'll move on to consider what the staff has provided us on, in February, as well as the current update, as well as the letters we received as of today. Thank you. So, tab number one, folks. Anyone have anything they want to talk about under tab number one? All right. Go on to two, please. Clarifications and addendums to our general plan policy document.
Chairman Vos? I just wanted to mention, if I could, on this particular item, that, like several others in here, this one will probably grow as time goes by. In fact, we're working on adding additional information to that. Obviously, any changes that would come out of the response or the commissioners' concerns would be added to this addendum, so you probably will see an update to this at a future meeting as well.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments on two? On three, which is part of the slideshow, basically, that we received back in January. Okay? Everybody clear on that?
Just a couple legend changes.
Sorry? Go ahead.
Oh, I'm just saying that this included the added school sites and the legend changes. That's correct?
Ah, yes, it does.
David, did you pick up the East Side Union's piece on J-8 and 40th as well? May not have. I didn't see it.
Yeah, I, it, I, we added the ones that we received correspondence from. If there was an indication, they...
There's actually, there's actually two sites, would be the southwest corner of future J-8 and 40th Street East. That's a gross 20-acre site running east to west. And then, on 30th Street East, just south of their district office, there's a five-acre And environmental's been circulated and certified on those.
Okay.
So you should have a copy here somewhere in the city.
Okay.
Anything further under three? Okay, tab number four, which is a synopsis of the commission's comments regarding the general plan policy document. Got anything?
Yeah, I have.
Go ahead.
Several.
Jump right in.
Okay. First off, page three, item number 11, which is also, in, if you refer to the summary log, C-12, there was a letter which I think also kind of coincides with my comments on the no-fly zone, and I...
Did you say C-12, Charlie 12?
Yes. Shu Shin, I'm not sure how to pronounce it, Se. I think it's the third page. Got that?
Right.
I have a letter here from Mr. Stephen B. Feins, let's see, no, that's not it. It's from Romeo Arango, chief engineer. I think, Brian, you have a copy of that, from the Department of the Air Force? It basically states that, let me find. "The Air Force has no objections to residential land use consisting of single-family residences at a density of four dwellings per acre for the portion of East Lancaster, California, bounded by 15th Street East on the west and 30th Street on the east, Avenue K-4 on the north, and L on the south." So I'd kind of like to discuss that, because basically, you're referring to this as the, I could say no-fly zone, but the overflight area. I don't know if we have any other letters requesting that.
Dave, are there, do you recall, are there others in the log in that area?
Ah, yes, there's several. Within, within the area that would be, that is identified in the ACU study, the Air Force ACU study, is the overflight zone. It's generally south of Avenue K-8.
It's interesting, we approved last regular meeting, or no, the meeting before last, a church on Avenue L at about 15th Street East, near this particular request, actually south of it, further into the quote "no-fly zone" as defined by the staff. So we have a, we have a quandary. The engineer from the Air Force, Plant 42, says it's not a problem for a single-family residential, and it's been historically the city's position south of K-8, no residential, right?
Well, actually, actually, what it's, what it's been, and what the Air Force's position has generally been, is that in overflight areas, they wanted a limit on, on density. And that limit...
Real?
Yeah, generally at about one unit to the acre. The, the whole overflight area down there was the subject of a fairly extensive city analysis and review back in the timeframe of, what, 1994, 1995? It was actually the, the subject of quite a bit of public discussion and debate. And the Air Force, as I recall, was, was pretty adamant at that time in regards to what they considered necessary buffering to ensure that they didn't have a problem with the long-term operation of their facility. When the new ACU studies came out, it did show, based upon what they expected in terms of their testing, a reduction in some of the noise contours compared to the previous ACUs. But the Air Force, in their discussion with us about that study, has always had a couple of different things that they've looked at. One is, under their own ACU's regulations and studies, when you are within a particular classification as far as noise, or within an accident potential zone, there are restrictions that they want on land use. However, both for Palmdale and for Lancaster, they also identified in that ACU study what they called overflight areas. Areas that may not be subject to the, the noise contour issue in terms of being above 65 decibels, or community noise equivalent levels, but areas nonetheless that have pretty frequent overflight by aircraft. And what their concern has always been is that if you allow significant or dense enough urban residential uses to locate in those areas, that you set up a potential situation where, over time, because of complaints, or people concerned about the amount of noise and overflight that occurs, that it begins to render their ability to carry out their mission somewhat compromised. Staff's position is that, given the effort that we went through down in that area, and given the understanding that we've had with the Air Force since the mid-'90s, we would not support at this time a change down in that area, at least on a piecemeal-type basis. We would recommend that if there's a real concern, that there ought to be a different density, or, or something considered down there, or even a different land use going to industrial of some kind, that that be done as part of a, a separate analysis, and that it really ought to involve the Air Force much more fully than simply a letter from them. Because I would really like to have a chance... Because I would really like to have a chance to talk to them and understand what exactly they're saying in terms of the letter. You know, they give kind of a density range. I don't know if they're seeing that, you know, when they say one to four units to the acre, are they saying, you know, we're expecting lots of 12,000 or 13,000 square feet versus seven? I, I think it would be important to understand that.
I would agree with you, Mr. Luke.
That's right.
Why don't we then, prior to our meeting in two weeks, our next special, see if we can either have a representative from 42 here or set up some form of a meeting? So, because if you look at C-12, behind C-12, the letter from Mr. Mrs., I'm sorry, Mrs. Whatever, I'm sorry, H-S-E-I-E-H. When you look at the plat of the property they're requesting, it is adjacent and co-terminous to R. 1-7,000 existing developments, which would be theoretically closer to the, the Air Force overfly than, so I, I mean, and then we approved on parcel 15, or, I'm sorry, on parcel 13, last meeting before last, a church. Now, I recognize a church isn't occupied 24/7 like a home can be, and that's part of the concern of the Air Force, too. I've read that same report, and, and if you look at the, the patterns, I mean, three-quarters of the city Lancaster is covered by this 65 CNL, and various, depending on the weather and which way they fly and all that sort of stuff. So, we really need to get our arms around it because it's imperative for the general plan approval, isn't it?
Well, I would say, I would say yes and no. In one sense, yes, it would be good to, to kind of understand what the Air Force's position is, and, and maybe, you know, rather than putting the question to them, would you accept residential of this, maybe the question ought to be, what would be your preferred land use pattern in this area, given, given choices among them?
What, what we did in the past, what the city did in the past approving, those were Harris tracks, I think, there-
Right.
-over the years. I mean, the, the overfly was more severe than it is today. They had more traffic-
Correct.
More, more flights, all that, right?
Yeah, the reason that those were not changed, and, and in the, the analysis that was done, those areas already had approvals in place and, and work being done on them at the time that the analysis was being done. That's why you see the majority of the, of the area east of there as being clear in a pretty, you know, pretty consistent line in terms of R. 1 towards Avenue L., the S. R. as you go further north to provide that transition. The second thing that I was gonna, gonna point out that I think is important to recognize, back when the initial changes were looked at down in that area, and by that I mean requests that we were dealing with as a city back in the late 1980s, including the Kaufman Road Track, which exists right now north of the soccer center, which was really, I think, the catalyst project for looking at all of this to begin with. One of the things that was very clear at that time was that there was a shortage, and it was pretty easy to, to find it in terms of, of single-family residential land. That same situation doesn't exist today in the sense that there's not an immediate need to try to find close-in, in particular, that type of land. But given your suggestion, I think we'll, you know, we can contact the, the individual at Air Force Plant 42, try to get a better understanding of what their current concerns may be based upon what they see their mission being. But, you know, it was pretty, pretty clear that, that at least at that time, the city council, you know, was not interested in doing anything that might compromise the future ability of Plant 42 to operate, or might, particularly because at that time you were going through a lot of base reduction activities in the federal government. They didn't want to create a situation where, because of encroachment on those operations, it became too easy a decision for the federal government to simply say, that's one base we can close because it's a problem.
Well, just one last comment on that for me. I'm all for contacting them and seeing if we can't resolve the issue, but I feel that if we have a document from them that says it's okay to do this, then I don't, if the, if the city council wants to prohibit building within their, that fly zone, then, you know, I don't have a problem with that, based on, you know, your recommendation. But if the Air Force is okay with it, and the city council doesn't have a reason for doing it, then we should probably look at either rezoning it, granting their request, or not using the no-fly zone as a, really, I would see as an excuse not to abide with their request.
Yeah, as I said, I, I think that it, it would be incumbent upon us to try to, try to understand exactly what they're saying in terms of any correspondence that they've provided, and make sure that they understand clearly the ramifications of, of the action. You know, sometimes in, in our dealings with military installations, they, they tend to be looking at an individual site at times, but they need to understand the precedent that they may be setting, or, you know, we, we need to get them to look ahead and make sure that they're not setting themselves up for a problem or what they perceive as one. Because that, that was actually the long-term debate that they had with us back, gosh, seems like yesterday, but it was a while back now, I think.
So by our next special meeting, you think it's reasonable to assume we can have a little more clarification on this, or?
We'll cer-, we'll certainly make the request to discuss it with them. I, I obviously can't promise that they'll meet with us between now and then, given the-
All right, thank you.
... whatever their time constraints may be.
All right, Dan?
Page number four, item number 14. The staff response was pending. I was just wondering if, is that something you would like to comment to now or later?
Item 14?
Yeah, actually, if you look at the updated information, we've proposed a revision to it.
Right. But I do have a, I do have a question about the, the recommendation as well. Did you, did you get a, did you find your copy of it?
Where is it? Is it here? This is in the stuff that was distributed. Just distributed? Okay. I'll go through it. Go ahead.
Okay. I'll ask my, my question. I thought, "Noise-reducing windows and placement of entry doors on the side of buildings facing away from major roadways." So define for me what a major roadway will be before I go any further.
The, the intent is that, and it's important to understand in the context in which this exists, there are a number of, of potential ways listed that you can look at reducing, using noise impact. It doesn't require any project to necessarily abide completely by these. It simply says, here are techniques that can be employed. The intent would be that if the noise source that's being, that's being the problem, or is the problem, were to be like Sierra Highway, you know, 10th Street West or something of that type, and, and that major roadway being a, you know, in most cases, a major arterial, that one of the ways to look at potentially reducing noise impacts in the interior of those units is to place those entry doors on a side of a building that's not immediately facing the street.
So for instance, if this was a, Walgreens on the corner of 10th Street West and Avenue K., it has doors facing, so where would you put them? In the back of the store?
Yeah, this is really intended-
Reverse the, the, the pad, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, if the noise situation were to be, were to be that severe, this is really intended more to deal with sensitive or noise-sensitive type uses, and the ones that, that come to mind more, more fully are, are residential type uses. Commercial office has a higher level of, of noise that it can tolerate under, under the provisions of the general plan. And in most cases, our, our roadway noises don't, don't create that, that problem for them.
Well, my concern is, is that if this interpretate, I hear what you're saying, but, you know, five years, 10 years down the line, if this interpretation then is brought forward by community members, homeowners, or whatever, when a typical commercial development faces the major street, this would be something that would, could be used to quash a project or bring a suit under eminent domain because, or under SEQA, I should say, not eminent domain, under SEQA, because it does, because it violates the premise of the general plan. That's my concern. So I think we'd be able to be very careful with our language. When you say a major roadway, I mean, I mean, I could, that could be Avenue L., that could be Avenue K., it could be 10th Street West, it could be Avenue Y.
Yes, understood. Going, going back to the, to the language of the specific action, if you go to, to 4.0, yeah, 4.3.3A, the way it reads, "In reviewing noise impacts, utilize site and architectural design features to mitigate impacts on sensitive land uses in conjunction with provision of noise barriers." So, so it does, in my, in my reading of it anyway, restrict itself to the idea of noise-sensitive uses.
So then maybe it should say that, and we should drop the major roadway out of there, so there's no confusion.
Well, the only, the only reason I would leave it is we do have situations where you have particularly moderate or higher-density residential that in some cases is along those major roadways, and there, there may be occasion where, where employing those techniques would be appropriate.
But typically don't, doesn't the commission or the council have the authority under those, on the design standards, to require those kinds of circulation elements and entry points and that sort of thing?
Yeah, so does staff in, in that regard, whoever the approval body would be for a particular project.
More often than not, those are PDs and require conditional use permits and that sort of thing, right?
Yeah, once again, it's, it's dependent upon the, the exact project and so forth, but yeah, it's intended that whoever would be the, the reviewing entity, and of course, staff would be the first one in any event. It, it's ways to make sure that if there, if there are techniques that can be employed and reduce those, those potential noise impacts in those situations where we think there might be a, a problem, that, that we consider those things that are listed.
Thank you. Anything further, Dan?
16, page four. We talk about the, the master plan for trails, and I know we have that as a priority, too. My concern, again, is that, I know it's been on the list to get done, and it's been a problem, but perhaps maybe, I know equestrian seems to be a problem with that and planning. Would it be helpful if we split those two up, bikeways and equestrian trails? Would that maybe speed along the process at least for the bike trails?
Potentially. I, I would say that, that because this references to a master plan of trails, I, I wouldn't exactly try to split them out. Maybe you could, you could add language if the commission deems it appropriate to, to indicate that pedestrian and, and bicycle, perhaps if they can be moved more quickly as a part of a master plan of trails, that they be dealt with more quickly, rather than, rather than splitting it, it out necessarily.
Okay. And again, I don't have a problem with the priority. My, my concern is the end result about when it might happen. And in here, I know the, the Economic Times may prohibit this moving up the priority list, but is there a way that we could put a, a defined timeframe on this, and then if the budget situation decides that we can't work on it, at least the community would know that this is a priority, and it would only be taken off, you know, if the council seemed fit, or city staff seemed fit because of budget problems?
Yeah, I, I think, number one, by assigning it, as we've suggested, a priority, too, which indicates that with essentially within a year that we would initiate that, and if it's a particular concern of the commission, I, I think it would be appropriate to take that forward to the council and in terms of any, any recommendation, stating that this is a priority from the commission's standpoint, and that they would encourage the council to consider appropriating the necessary resources to, to have this undertaken.
When you look at the policy document on page Roma numeral four dash five, it calls out multipurpose urban and rural trail systems. So if that's the intent of the multipurpose, it gives me the connotation that they are this, on the same tract of land, if you will, that they would be intermingled. So is that division we're talking about here?
Especially for, for things that are, that are off-road or, or not a part of a, of a street right-of-way, we usually will try to mix in urban areas pedestrian and bicycling. Equestrian is something that we have some portions of in rural areas. That one has always been a little more difficult because the, the level of use is not as high, and the level of maintenance can be more, more of an issue at times. But yes, it's, it's the intent that if we have an area that is available for trail use, that we try to place as many modes as possible into that, into that trail corridor.
Is everyone good with that?
The only comment I would make is the trail system, it came up before, and as we talk about creating a sense of community. I know that when you talk to residents of, for example, an area like Valencia, they'll commonly bring up the topic of their trail system and how it creates that sense of community. And yet, I believe it's been in the works for many years and never made the priority that it sounds like it needs to be made. So it sounds like we're in agreement that we need to create some type of system, create a priority on this trail system in the master plan, and I guess the question is, how do we do that?
I think from your perspective as a, as a planning commission and your advisory role, you would ask us to carry that forward as a pretty strong recommendation to the council. Ultimately, you know, they're the ones who, who, you know, determine, determine priority and placement of resources to achieve those things.
Very good. All right. Do you have anything further, Dan?
Yeah, page eight. Page eight, number 30.
Page eight?
Yeah.
Number 30.
We had mentioned about putting office professional under commercial, and I think that's staff's recommendation that it not be, and that we have to go through, that the property owners would have to go through a general plan amendment. Is that correct?
The, the question, I think, was there, there are more things that you can do under commercial than you could do under office professional, as we understood the comment, and, and that was intentional. There are several areas within the city, and I wouldn't say this is a large amount of area, but several areas within the city where there is an office professional designation placed. And the basic difference between that and just a general commercial zone is that the office professional is more restrictive in the types of uses that it allows. And as a- that it allows. And as a result, it was considered to be an appropriate designation for areas, particularly if you're looking at places that are trying to-- we used to have residential face a major street, and you're looking at potentially trying to transition that to something that is not residential, but it assures the residents that exist in the nearby neighborhood that you're not going to have the things that they usually fear the most out of commercial uses, fast-food restaurants, mini-markets, things of that type, which are not allowed within the office professional designation. So yes, there's an intent that it's intentionally restrictive. It exists on a couple of areas in town. I know on 10th Street West, between J6 and J8, on the east side of the street. It's on Avenue L from 30th to 32nd, I believe. And it exists also around the courthouse, the county courthouse, to the west, or excuse me, to the east and a little bit to the north.
Would that be something that you could handle with a conditional use permit, then, perhaps? Or generally speaking, then you'd still have to go through a general plan amendment to change the designation, right?
Well, if you wanted to have a use that was more commercial in nature, that wasn't allowed within the office professional designation, you would have to request an amendment to the general plan, as it's currently situated. As I said, we haven't used this designation in a lot of locations, but it has been used in areas where there's been a desire on the part of the city to restrict what you might call the more problematic types of commercial uses. So that's the reason for it.
I guess my only concern, then, would be, since the staff would be controlling the process anyway, wouldn't it be a little bit easier for property owners to go through the conditional use permit process that would still be controlled by rules and regulations and have to come to the planning commission, correct, instead of having to go through that general plan amendment for that?
Yeah. You're right. It would be easier for them to request changes through the conditional use permit process, or request a certain type of use through that. If there's some concern that there are uses not allowed within the office professional designation that maybe ought to be considered through a CUP process, my advice would be, instead of redesignating that to commercial, that you consider perhaps amending the office professional designation in the code and adding those uses that you think might still be compatible or appropriate in those locations through a CUP.
I guess I was looking at probably the other side of the coin, going from commercial to office. It's the same situation, isn't it? And it wouldn't be as-- it wouldn't be-- I think property owners wouldn't view it as negatively that an office, if somebody wanted to convert commercial to office, but you'd still have to go through a general plan amendment for that. And I'm just considering, you know--
No, no, not in that situation. If you had a commercial land use designation or a commercial zoning designation, building offices is permitted under commercial. What you can't do is, under an office professional designation, you can't do certain of the types of commercial uses that, or even request them through a CUP, that might prove to be problematic. And in cases where the city is fairly confident, or has been fairly confident, that there are certain uses that we just don't want to allow in certain locations, liquor stores, bars, fast-food restaurants, things of that type, the office professional designation simply doesn't allow them to happen. And as I said, it's a fairly limited zone or land use classification. It's placed in some fairly limited situations. But from a staff perspective, we think it's a fairly important one. And, you know, at least in our dealings with our residents, they've been a lot more comfortable with that designation in terms of allowing transition in certain areas to happen, as opposed to just a commercial zone, where they think they always have to be vigilant about a type of use that they wouldn't want to have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anyone else? I've got a couple myself, so. Under the matrix on page five, item 18, my comments related to clearly identifying Edwards Air Force Base and including Air Force Plant 42. And the comments back from staff are what they are. However, when we talk about economic development and vitality, the references made 16 dot 2 dot 1 A and B do not call out the Air Force plants. They don't call out, they just say military and civilian aerospace. So I don't see what the problem is in inserting Edwards Air Force Base, since it's an employer of some 10,000 or 12,000 people in this community, as well as Air Force Plant 42 somewhere in the document. So it's clear of our support of the development of those facilities, and our understanding of not infringing upon their mission. We don't have to go into the detail, I just want to go on record. On item 20, on page six, the citing was 14 dot 4 dot 5 E, and it should have been C, Charlie. So if you take a look at that-- Let me see if I can find the page here. So when we look at the land use maps as proposed in support of 14.4.5C, it's all mixed use, right, around the Metrolink Station--
Yes.
--north and south and east. And mixed use would be defined, we have yet to define it under any zoning regulation or code. So that would include possibly bus garages and transportation nodes and that sort of stuff? I mean--
Yes, actually, you could have that. In fact, that's been, at times, a point of discussion with ABTA about trying to get better transit tie. One of the things that I know staff has discussed, both with the redevelopment agency and with the Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization Department, for quite a number of years, the city has tried to encourage a lot of industrial growth within that area. We have been, you know, either mildly or not successful at all. But there may be the opportunity for some transit-oriented housing to occur there instead. And that's part of the reason for looking at that, is having a mixed use designation on it, feeling that that might, in fact, provide a better vehicle for providing some of the transit supportive things we're talking about, other than the industrial zone, which, you know, by and large, doesn't allow housing. So that's part of the thought process, and, you know, trying to look at, hopefully, over the long term, if we're successful in our downtown area on the west side of the station, possibly building on that and using housing as part of that building block to the east side of the station also. So that's been part of the thought, the thought process.
And you're still of the opinion that the mixed use designation is a PD land use when we get into the zoning regs?
Yeah, I agree with you that, at this point in time, it's a little bit hazy, not having been fully defined. But clearly, from our standpoint, the mixed use designation is intended to be a mix of some kind of housing and supportive commercial services.
Okay. All right. Next one, 22, and the revision that was prepared reduced Part One crime below the 300 crimes per thousand. That's the commission, that's the council's objective, as well as, if I understand it correctly, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. On page seven, item 25, the concern I raise relative to the downtown development and municipal services in the downtown, we don't have a governmental designation, I guess, that I could find in the general plan. We have commercial, we have that sort of thing. So my concern was identifying and reserving, if you will, sufficient land use within the downtown core in support of the governmental facilities of the city. And that's why I brought it up. So if you're satisfied that the proposed land uses that we'll adopt, whether it's general commercial or whatever, will satisfy that, then I don't have a problem with it.
I think from a regulatory standpoint, the specific plan downtown does address it adequately. I think the issue you're getting to, I think, actually goes a step beyond that, which is the idea is the city strategically looking or identifying potential target properties that could be of value to us in terms of, you know, expanding municipal services or municipal facilities, whether that be an underutilized parking lot right now that might have better opportunity, you know, as something supporting city all operation, or any of the things that we're doing. I think, to some extent, the city is always aware of trying to place as much downtown as possible. We've done that on a, I think, pretty consistent basis over the last 20 years. The latest example that I can give you is the city's effort to move the museum art gallery to a better facility out on the boulevard with the former Wells Fargo Bank building, which has been underway now. But I'm not sure how to address it beyond that in terms of a specific action or so forth.
Well, maybe the suggested specific action would be, given the size of the governmental buildings and their square footage in support of the population we currently have, maybe there's a, an analysis could be done and a recommendation made for the kinds of governmental facilities and square footages in support of the growth in the general plan as projected. So if it's another 40,000 square feet or 140,000 square feet, sufficient land ought to be set aside to support that parking, whatever, and identify it. Otherwise, you'll box yourself in, and then you'll be doing eminent domain of occupied structures, and that's not a lot of fun. So, just a suggestion. On page nine, number 32, 17 dot 1 dot 2A. And it relates to, if I recall-- "In part, inventory is to provide housing opportunities for all economic segments of the community, consistent with the provisions of the general plan," key word being "all." Where it ties, it ties to my next concern, or same concern, relative to housing opportunities. Item 36 on page 11. The reason I brought it up here is that I also brought it up under 36 on page 11. Title 25 of the Housing and Community Development Law is a state law that requires, the suggestion in the general plan document is to require, or to eliminate this type of housing, and then also to require onsite management. Well, the key to that is a state law. A state law prohibits onsite management of under 16 units. So I think we need to be consistent and conform to state law, because I don't think the general plan revision can change that. So you might want to look at that.
We have asked our legal counsel to look into that related issue.
Well, I think it even goes further than that, because you're trying to eliminate triplexes and fourplexes. I don't think you can do that either. And I think that would be dangerous also. I think your problem with triplexes and fourplexes was the location that they were in. And at the last time we had this discussion, Mr. Ledbetter suggested that there was an increase in the amount of crime that you saw, and you were going to show us the evidence of that. And we were looking for that evidence, but it's not here. And I was going to ask that question. But Jim's right. I don't think you can just eliminate whole groups of housing and not make that available to people. And I think you really have to seriously consider whether that's not a location problem, rather than an age problem, or a problem that comes from-- it's not a problem of the specific type of housing. It's a problem of where they're located, or how old they are, or the kind of people that can afford to live in them. It's not a problem of the kind of housing that they are. I'm sorry.
You're doing fine. We're operating on the jump-in rule.
Okay, good. I had to.
No problem. Have anything further?
No.
Okay. All right.
Can I just ask real quick, because we did ask last time we talked about this topic, about getting some statistics that had to do with crime. Is that still in the works? Is that--
So as we indicated here in staff response to this particular item number 36 and 37, the staff response is still pending. So we're investigating. That's still a yes.
So when do we anticipate the response, next meeting?
Let me jump in real quick and add to that. We are currently unveiling the statistical analysis of the crime data that we've been receiving and collating for a number of months. That'll be happening tomorrow, actually, as a matter of fact, internally with staff to identify, you know, successes and failures and remedies to problems associated with that. So we'll be able to get that out to staff in the next week or two, some of that data, whether it applies to the general plan update, while referred in Dave, and to include that. But nonetheless, that data is going to be available very soon.
Yeah, I'll add only one more thing in regards to why these policies are drafted and specific actions are drafted the way they do. Back at the time that this general plan, the one that's currently in the city, was being prepared, the belief on the part of the city, and I'll, you know, I'll leave it out there for you to say that was right or wrong, was that the problem was really, in terms of the triplexes and fourplexes, was the inconsistent management of them, where you would have a property owner-- Where you would have a property owner who managed their property very well, kept their tenants, you know, towed the line, and you might have three or four that did that, and then you'd have one that didn't.
But you're addressing a code enforcement issue.
I have those issues.
You're addressing, you know, if the state law says that you're not required, under state law, to have onsite management of anything under 16 units, that's a state law. Now, I suppose you could lobby to get the law changed, but I think it'd be pretty tough sledding to do that. But what, you know, it seems to me what we're talking about is a crime potential or perceived crime problem in these kinds of existing units, these defined as triplexes and fourplexes, and absentee ownership. Well, that's a code enforcement issue, that's a sheriff's issue, those are issues that go beyond housing opportunities for people. And, you know, if other communities in the state, and as well as ours, professes to provide housing to all types and all needs, then we shouldn't be eliminating it. And it's clear under this specific action that that's the intent. And I don't believe that's my, it's certainly not my intent to eliminate that type of housing, any type of housing opportunities. I mean, the whole premise of the general plan is to provide, among other things, adequate housing to meet all needs, right?
Yes. I think if you look at how the logic of this held together, and once again, I'm not saying that you necessarily want to agree with it, but the idea was that because of the issues that had occurred in largely triplex and fourplex areas, the intent was to try and make sure that, while we had to manage the areas that existed, that there was not a real desire on the part of the city to create or recreate those kinds of areas again through a subdivision process or anything else.
Well, using that same logic, then, you could transition that then to single-family, couldn't you? Where you have absentee owners who are not managing their single-family dwellings and rentals properly, and, I mean, where do you stop, or where do you start?
Yeah, it's a valid point. You know, I certainly understand your point of view on it. So, you know, I offer it more as a way of explanation than anything else.
All right. Thank you. I don't think you've heard from the commission that we should, that the commission is encouraging elimination of triplexes and fourplexes. That's not what I've been hearing from the members, so unless somebody wants to... Okay.
Okay. That may remain an area of the policy document, then, that's still subject to change based upon just the way it's dropped.
I imagine it will be before we approve it. On page 40, or 13, on item 43, were you okay with that one, Dan? The staff response? Nonprofit foundations and public donations in support of the arts? All right, thanks. Yeah. Unless somebody has something else, we're done with four. All right. The next section deals with request letters from property owners or their representatives, and we were provided with a summary log, as recently updated as of this afternoon, this evening, actually. So, if I understand the premise of staff's support, in the first section, Group A, the conformance to the G-PAC Preferred Plan, for, as a point of reference mainly, okay? So that's Group A. Group B is staff recommendations of support, and the reasons for it. And then Group C is staff recommendations of denial, as it relates to all 34, no, more than that, I guess, probably closer to 40. So what I would suggest we do is that we would go through each group, and if anyone has any comments about any of the, any of the recommendations in Group A, speak up. Now, these aren't the only land use changes, because the recommended preferred plan has land use changes on it as well, which we will get into once we get past this, right?
We have the, it's under item number two, is a list of, it's addendum to the land use map, and that's an addendum to the preferred plan. So those changes we've already brought to you regarding...
But the preferred plan is different than the current general plan?
Absolutely.
That's my point.
Okay.
Current general plan is being, the suggestion of the preferred plan is different than these requests?
Right, yes.
Okay. So the overlay ultimately will be whatever the commission decides in relationship to these request letters, or suggests, maybe, maybe not decide, but suggests, would overlay on the, some map that we will ultimately consider after the public hearings on the matter, right?
Right. What we will, what we intend to bring, and this is a good point to segue into this regarding staff's recommendation, because we eventually will bring a recommendation to you that you will entertain. That recommendation actually will be composed of the preferred plan, onto which Group B would be applied, in addition to the changes under the addendum that we provided under tab two. That's essentially, those elements comprises staff recommendation. Now, there may be some other modifications, because we will receive more information as we get close to the public hearings. But essentially, that, those components comprise what will be staff's recommendation for the general plan map.
So if we get to the point before, by the end of this meeting, that we're satisfied and we're suggesting to the, to staff to move forward with the hearing process, then whatever correspondence and requests happen between now and then would be considered?
That's right.
Okay. And then the public hearing process would also be considered? And then our ultimate review and consideration would be at the end of the public hearing process?
Right. You will eventually make a...
So if we have suggestions tonight of, let's just pick one, A1, we'll start the first one. The suggestion, recommendation, is it conforms to what the preferred plan is. And that was part of a series of requests by this particular applicant, however, that's the first one. So if I don't agree with that, I would express that I don't, I don't agree with that. I think it's premature, and I think it's too remote, and I think it's also encumbered with some serious high-tension 500 KV power lines. So that's my point of view. Others may have some different point of view, but I'm just expressing that. So we're under A, so if anybody's got any comments under A, jump in.
I might just mention that when we get to the public hearing process, this summary log will have another column added to it that will have planning commission, you know, recommendation boxes. So there will be, you know, this, at this point, this is a discussion item, but when we get to the public hearing, we'll modify this, the summary log that has that additional column in it.
Okay. All right. Any further comments on A from anybody? This isn't our last time at this, no doubt. I mean, we'll certainly do this, probably review it at the next meeting, and then ultimately folks may want to submit other requests as well. Hearing none, okay. B.
I have one on B3.
B3, go ahead.
I know staff supports the request, and I think it's for two acres, but I think, didn't we talk at the last meeting that we were looking at increasing the acreage on this corner?
Actually, I think we've gotten subsequent correspondence asking that to go to essentially 10 acres, which, quite frankly, from staff's standpoint, if you're going to look at that as commercial, which we've recommended you do, probably is a better size than simply the two-acre site.
Okay. I concur with that.
So, as originally proposed and recommended by staff, it's a gross two-and-a-half acre net, probably an acre and a half, which would lend itself to some sort of, I'll be kind, neighborhood convenience. I would agree that it's undersized, and in my point of view, not needed, given the proximity of a large center across the street, full service, as well as full-service centers a mile away. As a, you know, it's, to do a proper shopping center, other than a single-use tenant like a Walgreens or something like that, I can see no need for it in this, now or in the future. Personally, I don't see the need for it, but that's my point of view. Go ahead.
This is kind of confusing.
That's not the one.
This isn't the one that we're looking at?
No.
Then no wonder I'm confused. But the process here is a little confusing. This gentleman wants to build a shopping center.
Who knows what he wants to build?
We don't, we don't know what he wants to build, but he's asking for a change in the zoning.
Land use, he's asking for zoning, but that's not what we're doing, it's land use.
Okay. But he hasn't come to us with any kind of a plan.
No.
He hasn't come to us with any kind of a...
No. Any kind of anything.
Anything.
That's right.
But he's asking us to make a decision about it.
Well, and that's what the other 75 or 80 folks are asking as well. So that's really what our consideration is. If we think that land use is appropriate, or, you know, if, for instance, in this quadrant, if we thought two acres or two-and-a-half acres is undersized, it ought to be 15, then we'd say so. Or if we think it should be 25, we'd say so. If we think it should be zero, we'd say so. So my suggestion is that we don't do it at all, but that's my suggestion, and you guys may think differently.
I just don't think we have enough information. Maybe I got spoiled.
You get spoiled with the condition use for this, that's right.
Yeah, all the information we do get.
Right.
And you feel a little bit secure making a decision, because you have a lot of information, and then somebody comes along that asks you to make a decision with no information.
It's all visionary.
Yeah. I don't think the people of Lancaster should have the planning commission make decisions based on speculation.
So you don't support this either?
No.
Okay. Anybody else want to talk? Okay. All right, the next one.
Can I make another statement?
You can say whatever you like.
Are all of the rest of these just exactly like this?
Are the, are the rest of these exactly...
All the other requests just exactly like this?
No.
Some of them, all these little pictures?
They're all different.
Oh, okay. Okay. I'll ask each one.
They're all different. Some are commercial, some are urban, some are office, some are medium-density residential, some are high-density residential, they're all over the board. Pardon?
Yeah, but I think you have to keep in mind that there are no plans with any of these requests.
Okay. So we're under B, as in boy.
Which number are we on?
We're on B. Any of them?
We just talked about B3 and B3B. B3B. All right. The next one is B4. That's a site on the far west, actually on the west side of 70th Street West, is that correct?
Yes, that one is.
And to the west of that is all...
Non-urban.
Pardon?
Non-urban.
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 So depending on the outcome of applications for general plan amendments that are pending before the commission, it seems that the core of shopping in support of the west-side community is along 60th. So I think this is premature as well, and speculative. So I disagree with staff's support.
I agree with that.
Hold on, I gotta turn the right page. Go ahead.
Are we still on...
We're still on B, right?
You're on B4 still, or are we done with that?
Yeah, we're done with B4.
I just have a question.
Oh, yeah. B5, actually.
Can you explain what, yeah, B5, what square-off urban residential areas means?
Yeah. Right now, the urban area of the city, if you, if you look on the map, comes along essentially Avenue J to 65th Street West, goes southward along 65th to Avenue K, and then westward out to 70th. What we're recommending is that 70th become the westward line, if you will, of that urbanizing area. So there's about a half of a square mile of land right now between 65th West, 70th West, J to K, that is non-urban. And if you go south of there, it's urban out to 70th. We're recommending that simply 70th up to J kind of square off that area, and that that be allowed as an expansion of the city's urban residential location.
That was my understanding too, and that's why I don't support four, or B4, because it's west of the urban area. And I don't think that's sufficient, won't have sufficient residential to support it. Did I? Yeah? I don't have any notes on B7, I have on B8. Want to talk about B7? Yeah, you don't have those maps. So, with this staff recommendation, the land uses up to and including a project that's come before us a couple of times and been continued about six times, would be designated as office professional as opposed to commercial.
I think our recommendation, though, only applies to the area that is east of Seventeenth West.
East of Seventeenth West?
Yeah, between Fifteenth and Seventeenth.
Okay.
It does not apply to the area that is west of Seventeenth West.
On the north side?
Correct.
What about the south side?
Yes, on the south side it is, and in fact, that is something that came to our attention several years ago, where, you know, you've got privately-held office buildings that are largely medical, but they're sitting in the hospital zoning classification. The problem with that is that the zoning classification for hospital technically doesn't allow you to do anything other than medical offices, and we know that there are professional-type offices located in some of these buildings. And I think it's a necessary correction.
Can you justify the consistency, then, of limiting the north side from Seventeenth back to Fifteenth and not westward to capture the existing medical that's there, office professional, I should say, which runs down to about what would be Eighteenth or Eighteenth and a half if it was there? You've got some new development that's been there for a couple, three years, and some stuff's been there for fifteen, but office professional, so, you know, maybe we want to rethink that. I don't know.
So, are you saying run it all the way down and not kind of hopscotch?
Well, yeah, because you're leaving a hole.
Yeah, I agree with that.
You're leaving a hole between the commercial at whatever the, wherever, and I don't know the name of the center, I don't know even if it has a name, where Tom's Twenty-seven or Ninety-two or whatever Tom's restaurant is.
Yes.
That way back east appears to me to be office professional, for the most part, or vacant land.
Or vacant land.
Or vacant land. So, to designate it all office professional, rather than hopscotch it with commercial, maybe would be a better land use.
Yeah, keep the consistency.
Okay. Pardon? I can't hear you, I'm sorry. Okay, on B eight, you're recommending an office professional on that one vacant lot on the southeast, excuse me, southwest corner of Twenty-second and K? To be consistent with the uses to the east?
Yeah, this is another one of those areas where you've got a little bit of a transition. As we kind of talked about before, the office professional zone allows use of property in a way that, you know, would permit offices and some limited commercial, but tends to avoid the problematic commercial uses. We thought, looking at this site, given the fact that you've got daycare and other uses eastward along K, and you've got residential to the north and to the west, that an office professional designation that, you know, would go primarily towards an office-type use, does allow, by conditional use permit, some residential also within the office professional designation would be appropriate. We couldn't see leaving it as a single-family residential. I'm not certain that that's the best use for that property, given its location on Twenty-second and K, but I think the office professional would be a reasonable approach.
So, would an application for use, any use under the office professional, come before us as a conditional use permit?
Not if it's a permitted use within the office professional zone. Any use for residential, which is going to be more of an attached product, would have to come through the use permit process.
What's the height limit, thirty, was it three stories on office professional?
I don't have the zone in right in front of me, I'd have to look.
I think that would be problematic with the proximity to the residents. I don't know if you know what, you guys know what I'm talking, where we're talking? Just a comment. Just a comment. What? From the south side of the street. Anything else from anybody? B seventeen, that was Mr. Troutman's property who spoke to us this evening, and the staff's recommendation is commercial as well as MR one, medium-density residential. My concern is this, as it relates to any land use around the prison. I don't think there's much we can do about the stuff south of J. It's already approved tracks, and for the most part, they're going to need some support for commercial use. So, I'm not going to take that issue up, but if you go north on Fiftieth, and if you then go west on I, and then go south on Sixtieth, there's no letters here, but I wanted to talk about it under this item. With proximity to prison, I think the land uses, as proposed, are too dense. I don't think it's in the city's best interest to promulgate density housing adjacent to a prison, adjacent to a youth prison, youth facility, not a prison, what is it called?
Challenger Youth Center.
Youth Center, probation. Or adjacent to a proposed jail expansion that the sheriff talked about last year, which I imagine will probably come before the city before we know it. I think it should be non-urban, very low density, as a buffer at least a half a mile, a quarter of a mile to a half a mile around the prison. I don't think we can do it on the south side, the city's already established, basically R one seven thousand there, and I think it would be difficult to overlay urban on top of that, non-urban, I should say, on top of that. So, I don't think that we can do much about it, but I think we can certainly address the vacant land to the east of Fiftieth, to the north of I, and to the west of Sixtieth. But I don't think it's in our best interest to encourage any kind of density housing, not even R one seven thousand, I don't think that's appropriate, my opinion again. Okay. That was B seventeen. Anything else from anyone? Before we jump to C. Okay, C three. Where am I looking? I had C twelve marked, that was the overflight issue, right? Okay. C twenty. Yeah, C twenty is the same, the staff comment on denial for the land use, right? So, my assumption is everything south of K eight would be either non-urban or industrial. Okay. I think we approved a track on the east side of Twentieth, which was non-urban land use, didn't we? Two, three months ago? Tentative map, yeah.
I know there's some proposals on the east side for a half-acre, I mean, a half-acre subdivision.
Near the fire station, maybe? I don't know, whatever. Okay, C twenty-two, why did I have that marked? Okay. Just a comment, I know we looked at a environmental impact report at Sixtieth and K, where the existing adjacent residential street patterns were being proposed to be redesigned into cul-de-sacs that encroached into the site, so, just a suggestion of consistency. I don't disagree with the recommendation, however. C twenty-six. Same thing on the overflight, that's why I had that marked. Consistency of the overflight.
Wasn't the dividing line on the overflight K eight?
It's actually K four, I think.
K four? Yeah, actually, the density transition begins at K four, if you will, goes from an urban to a non-urban.
So, it would be not non-urban use, then, is what the current general plan is, and that's what the proposed general plan would be, right? Non-urban. Okay. I had one more, and I didn't mark the darn thing. If you'll bear with me, please. Okay, it would be Thirtieth East on the northwest corner of J and Thirtieth East. So, which one is it, Dave?
I see a H.
It would be, I think it's a B.
Yeah, I believe it's B one.
Some of the Bs, that's where it is. Is it B seven? Am I right?
No, B one.
B one?
No, wrong one.
Northwest corner, Thirtieth East and J.
J is B one.
It's B one.
Oh, shows you what I know. B one, okay. My comment on that, if someone's going to do a realistic commercial development for the east side, and the transition, or the, excuse me, not transition, but the replacement of the proposed commercial zones at, or commercial uses at J eight and Thirtieth, then it seems to me that adequate acreage ought to be provided, and six acres isn't enough. You've got a gross twenty-acre site there that, by the time you take four streets off of it, you're going to end up with sixteen, maybe, if you're lucky, maybe fifteen, somewhere between fifteen and sixteen. So, if you propose six, you'll end up with four, and you really can't do much with four. So, my suggestion is, you go from Twenty-seventh to Thirtieth, and the depth of their property, and you'd have an adequate size to do a reasonable center, if and when it's ever needed.
Okay, so, and obviously, the rest of the commission would need to weigh in. Staff had recommended, I think the request from the applicant was three, and we had recommended ten, you're suggesting that it ought to be the entire parcel?
Well, three parcels, parcel fifteen, sixteen, and twenty-four. Actually, I think we had a map on this, a tentative tract map, didn't we, as a residential project?
There may have been one on a portion of it.
An extension, maybe it was.
Yeah, perhaps.
Something, I remember seeing it, that's all. So, it just seems to me, if we want, if the consensus is we want commercial in that area to support the surrounding residential neighborhood, the next nearest commercial use would be Avenue K, and there's a proposed project there. So, I would suggest we either include all three parcels or none. So, that's my suggestion. Any comments, one way or the other, from anybody?
Oh. I was just interested in both C two and C seven, their senior housing, both denied, and on the surface, they look like necessary projects that would be, I mean, we don't, obviously, we don't know very much about them, but will they be returned or come back because they look like projects that would be beneficial to the community? Do you think they would come back for further reconsideration?
Well, actually, on C two, one of the things that we had noted is that on the preferred plan, it is within an area designated as mixed use. Mixed use, as we've indicated, is something that we believe would incorporate residential and commercial supportive type services. What staff is saying is that we think the MU designation and the MU zone will, in fact, accommodate what they are requesting to do. So, rather than change the use to MR one, we were simply suggesting that it stay as MU as it is on the preferred plan, on C two. On C seven, oh, that was one, and this is, you know, once again, kind of a matter of philosophy here. Staff was looking at this as a potential site for the infill provisions that we had talked about. Now, granted, the infill provisions would only allow them up to eight units to the acre, but we thought that might be a better transition. If you were looking at something that might allow them more of a senior-type operation, I think you'd have to look at a higher density, but once again, remember that you can't really condition the land use on that. So, if they were to get that designation, they could carry forward with any kind of residential project that... residential project that met that density classification, so.
So Brian, when you look at the plot, or the aerial on this, assuming it's accurate, the vacant property to the south actually attaches to the nursing home that's there?
Yeah, hold on one second.
C7, right?
Yeah, C7.
I got the right page, I don't know.
Okay, in looking at the aerial, yes, the area that is vacant, south of it, is actually a part of that complex. In fact, I believe that, not so much against this property, but westward, they've actually developed that as additional parking area now.
Right.
So, but yes, there is a vacant piece of land or vacant area that they had looked at at one time as some additional.
Expansion, whatever.
Expansion of some kind. But in looking at that, we thought that perhaps, you know, a higher density, around eight units to the acre, as an infill, might be an appropriate designation for that site.
Better transition.
Yeah. That was our thought process on it.
Don't hear any disagreement, so. Okay. Anything further on the, in the C section? Are we done with TAB 5? Okay. TAB 6 is correspondence. From all sorts of people. So we have that for our consideration ultimately, and whatever action we choose to take. Anybody want to talk about any of the letters that are in there?
Can I jump back to C7 or 11?
Oh, you can, you bet. Go anywhere you want.
I'm slow on the uptake, I'm sorry. But in looking at the letter, it's not even for senior housing. It looks like the request is for apartments for the employees of the skilled nursing.
But that proponent is not affiliated with.
Right.
Adjacent properties.
But I think what the chart was saying is that it was for senior housing.
Could be used for senior housing.
What they're asking for is for multiple-family housing for employees of, for the employees of the skilled nursing and assisted living facilities.
Yeah, and then they listed as an alternative, a potential alternative, but you're correct, the primary project they listed was.
Would be apartments for the.
A market rate apartments.
Okay, that's all. I just had to throw my two cents worth in.
You okay with the agent?
Live-in manager?
Eight units, eight units to the acre is what the flex would be on that then, right, Brian?
Yeah, under an infill scenario.
Okay, and then TAB 7 is the project area map for the redevelopment project areas for the city.
Don't you want to say something about the excellent letter from the Association of Realtors?
What's that?
Don't we want to say something about the excellent letter from the Association of Realtors?
I don't care to know. Okay. That brings us to the end of the binder, Mr. Leach.
Well, the current end of the binder. We expect that there will probably be both written and oral testimony that will require you and us to further analyze, analyze.
No doubt. But that's during the public hearing process, or.
Or prior.
Special meeting.
Right.
So anyone who doesn't particularly care for our discussion and may want to attempt to influence us or offer their own opinion about anything, they certainly can at the next meeting, right?
Correct. Or write you now.
I don't see any cards.
No, but they can write to you.
They can write, that's certainly. So do we, we've completed this portion of the agenda. Do you want to take some time and review the mapping review, and what you expect of us, if anything?
What we will bring to you, what we anticipate bringing to you at the meeting on the 23rd of March, is some, a graphic representation of staff's recommendation. So we will have something that will show the preferred plan and show where we are recommending modifications occur to the preferred plan so that you can see those. We will also, as I mentioned earlier, bring forward to you additional information, addendums to the policy document, comments that we discussed tonight, along with other things that have come to surface since this first addendum was submitted to you. Then we will also bring forward any other additional correspondence, letters, so forth, that we received between this time and the day of the meeting, and continue this process towards coming to a resolution on these issues. With regard to the summary log, as I mentioned, we will be adding an additional column to that. That will have, will be a planning commission recommendation column, and, you know, we have this thing, we'll move into the next stage.
So will you be overlaying our comments on the graphic representation then for us?
Probably what we want to do first is bring to you a staff recommendation based of the components that we have given you tonight, and there may be some additional things that need to be brought forward by the 23rd. And then at that time, which will be, if indeed we are deciding that that will be the beginning of the public hearings, then the commission can discuss that information, and you can make recommendations on that input. Eventually, what is going to happen is that you're going to recommend to the city council what changes you think are necessary to the land use map and to the policy document, and that will be your recommendations for adoption.
I think that's what we've been doing in our conversations with ourselves and with you folks. So the sooner we get to it, the better, I think, and then we can actually hold public hearings for testimony. What we've had are public meetings for input. So I would suggest that we have what, you know, some people relate well to writing, some people are visual. And I would suggest that this group, we've got some of both. So maybe, my concern is, when you see it on a map, and it relates to a property owner's property, and then it's, and then the relationships of the existing land uses and the proposed changes, you may change your position on something, or you may find another, a different concern. So that's why I'm encouraging staff to reduce it to a graphic so we can all see it together, based on what our recommendations are. Now, if you're suggesting that you all are going to come up with your recommendations, and then we're going to tell you differently, that's okay too, if that's what I hear you saying.
That's what, that has been the traditional way that we've brought the general plan materials to the planning commission, is that we present a recommendation to you accompanied by supporting documentation, and then, you know, we've decided that you will make a formal recommendation.
So we'll bring our books and bring our notes, and we'll be ready for you.
Okay.
Good. So. So everybody's good with that? Okay, director's announcements?
Nothing, other than I appreciate the work that the commission has put into this effort in going through what, quite frankly, is a pretty heavy load of material. And, you know, I think ultimately, we'll end up with better results because of that. So I appreciate that.
There certainly will be results, I'm sure. So the next special planning commission meeting, scheduled for March 23rd.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And when we adjourn this meeting, it will be for our staff briefing on Monday, March 9th, and then the regular planning commission on the 16th. And you anticipate on the 16th that we'll be likely hearing the Hellenic Center?
Yes, that's, well, it'll be on the agenda, and we're preparing the staff report and our recommendations on it now.
I noticed there was a publication for another conditional use permit for a restaurant or something.
Yeah, I believe the Casablanca is coming back to you. You saw them in December, they've made some requests for some modifications.
So modification of their existing CUP?
Yes.
Okay. We'll be waiting for it. And besides those two items, do you anticipate anything more?
The car wash at 17th and J is on your agenda also.
Okay. All right. Anything further on, from the commission?
I would just like to thank Brian and staff for all the work they've put in. It's an enormous task that you've undertaken, and we all appreciate that.
Be measured by the volume of paper and the weight of the studies. It's huge. All right then, if there's nothing further, we'll be adjourned till Monday, March 9th at 5:30 PM in the planning large conference room here at City Hall. Thank you all for attending.